Okay, great. We're going to call meeting to order June 10th. Haddonfield Board of Education, public meeting and voting meeting. Mike, can you call the roll?
Mr. Bedford.
Here.
Ms. Brooke.
Yeah.
Ms. Ho.
Here.
Ms. Ho-Girl.
Here.
Ms. Cudner.
Here.
Ms. Peoli.
Here.
Ms. Rebecio.
Here.
Vice President Seidel.
Here.
President Sangello.
Here. We rise with the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of any injustice.
Mike, can you present the statement concerning open public meetings?
Public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act has been given by the Superintendent of Schools in the following manner. On January 15, 2021, notice of this meeting was posted on the interior of the school administration offices, One Lincoln Avenue, Haddonfield. Written notice was submitted and followed the Haddonfield Borough Clerk, and notices were faxed to the Courier-Post and Mail for Respect newspaper.
Thanks, Mike. Welcome, Board, welcome administrators. It's nice to see everyone's faces again. We are allowed to do this because we're following the guidelines. School is not in session and we're three feet distance. The recommendation is still that if you are not vaccinated, then you wear a mask. But if you're comfortable and you can go mask.
And no children.
And no children are present, school is not in session, right. So we are, we're having it. Mask was first one since this has started, so it's good to say hello. We have some student accommodations to lead us off. This is with Tozo, could you?
Yes, what's the easiest way to talk?
What do you need to do?
I don't know, just talk?
Just talk, just tell us what's going on.
I'm not supposed to be in front of a screen or behind a screen. So we have two sets of accommodations and it's an honor to be here. The first is to recognize the contributions of our executive board for our student council. Our student council has been working with us, starting virtually last spring. And when the executive officers knew that there was a very strong potential that we may not be in person, or if we were in person, that it would be some sort of situation that at the time we really weren't sure what the end game would be. They helped us prepare and plan virtual orientations, different kinds of spirit events, and have been working with us very closely by us meeting their advisors, Ms. Marie Muns as well as Jonathan Maxon. We will be honoring our student council in another way. They will be reading the names of their peers at our promotion next week. It's an honor for them to share their enthusiasm and their representation as the student voice in that capacity. So with that, Dash Lynn is unable to join us tonight, but we appreciate Dash's contributions. Maeve Hurley, if you're with us tonight, if you could unmute yourself and say hello. Maeve has been our president and Maeve will also be speaking at promotion giving the president's address. Chase Digillo is another member of our student council. Chase, if you're there, you can unmute and say hi. And finally, Grace Farrell. So Grace, if you're on the other end of the computer, our eighth graders may also be currently in a swimming pool. So if they are not with us tonight, they are busy celebrating with their classmates swimming. So with that, to our executive board, on behalf of myself, Dr. Russo and the faculty and staff, we thank them. The next set of accommodations is recognition through the National PTA Reflections. And every fall, our PTA works to provide opportunities for our artists, our poets, our writers, our musicians, to submit work to the PTA that is submitted to the local level and then eventually to the state level. And this evening, I would like to honor the following students. And tomorrow, they'll receive their certificates. Haddonfield Central Middle School, on behalf of the National PTA Reflections, presents Max Devaney for recognition in literature, Phoebe Reinhardt for recognition in photography, Chase Odom for recognition in literature, Harrison Berman for recognition in film production, Paige Buchler for recognition in film production, and Abigail Frey for recognition in literature. Congratulations to our middle schoolers who will be receiving their certificate tomorrow. Middle schoolers. I'm not sure what's in there.
Harrison's here.
So unmute and say hello.
Say hello, Harrison.
Hi.
Well done, Harrison.
Thank you.
We'll see you tomorrow, Harrison. We'll also be able to take a picture. So congratulations. We'll make sure to give you your certificate.
Well done, Harrison.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bedford. That's the end of the accommodations? Okay. We have a student representative report. It looks like Cyrus Marwana is present. Cyrus, you want to take us out?
Yes. First of all, I just want to say thank you. It's always an honor to and a privilege to present to you guys. So the first update I have is the school has won the No Place for Hate Award this year. And a few things that we have done to earn this is we had Chris Singleton share his story in an assembly with us. The Anti-Defamation League has made contributions and had pretzel sales outside in the breezeway. And I think this just shows that the administration and the student body are all working together to make our school more accepting and more comfortable for everyone. The next thing is our final project and test schedules. What I've found is that mostly teachers are giving project-based things, essays, speeches, instead of traditional tests. And this year, the schedule is by class period instead of subject. And one other rule, I guess, they have this year is you cannot take three tests in a single day, which I think definitely helps ease stress on the students because three two-hour exams is very draining. This year, this spring, a lot of students were eager to get back on their fields and courts and play their respective sports. And it has been a very successful year, to say the least. The girls' lacrosse won their sectional title today. Girls' track won. And boys' tennis won their sectional. So huge congrats to those teams. Well deserved. This, last few months, we have had a number of activities. Prom, Wellness Day, Arts in Stadium, the promenade, all, just to name a few. And overall, they were a success. They ran smoothly. A lot of the students had fun. They enjoyed them. And in a different year like this one, I think it's really important to have those activities. And we have actually learned a lot about these activities from this weird year during the pandemic. Some are, the promenade was actually a huge success in the stadium and a lot of people enjoyed that. So maybe in the future, we might keep that. Arts in the stadium might need to be in the courtyard like a normal year just because, I don't know, we like the feel of it in the courtyard, closer together. The next thing I have is about scheduling for next year. Counselors have been working with students to work on conflicts and schedules. A lot of students are making decisions about classes. And there's different dilemmas that are going on. Students have to sacrifice some classes for others. And it makes it really hard on students to choose one over another. And the final thing is just a wrap up of this year. We have had a very different year, to say the least. And it's gotten more normal as the year's gone on. And I think it has been a success overall. We've had almost every event that we would have in a normal year. And I think that just speaks to everyone working together. The administration really helping make this as normal as possible. So thank you.
Thank you, Cyrus. Anyone have questions for Cyrus while he's here? All right. That was a very good update. Thank you very much. Feel free to hang out and watch the presentations. We have three of them. There's going to be a presentation on the math committee by Dr. Murray. Mrs. Yukloza is going to talk about the high school conferences, some updates there, and the each of the summary report, which is given to us semi-annually by Mrs. Harvitz. From Mrs. Harvitz. Dr. Murray, are you there?
Yes, thank you. Hi, everyone. We have a committee gathered that worked on math over the course of a year. So we wanted to just share the results of that work. We'll share an overview and then we'll focus in on the elementary level and the secondary level. And then I'll share some conclusions as we move forward. I'd like to introduce who that team was. Kelsey Kennedy, central kindergarten teacher. Katie Green, central first grade teacher. Lisa Murphy, second grade teacher at Lizzie. Angela Lloyd, third grade teacher at Tatum. Ontu Nguyen, fourth grade teacher at Lizzie. Mary Hall, fifth grade teacher at Tatum. Bob Klein, principal at Tatum. Karen, Dr. Karen Russo, assistant principal of the middle school. Maya Argano, middle school teacher. Daria Resnick, primary middle school teacher. Michelle Cracher, high school teacher. Dan LaCotta, high school assistant principal. Myself and Rachel Brown, consultant for the district. And Mother in the district. So the overview is we focused on targeted problems in our data. And the teachers each created interventions, if you will, and then tried those interventions out with their colleagues, gathered evidence, brought that evidence back to the committee, and we used a protocol to analyze the results. And the results are we improved the curriculum and we have improved data. A little bit about the evolution. This committee was formed before COVID struck. And we formed with the intention to vet textbook resources, really specifically at the elementary level. The everyday math program at the elementary level is really kind of misaligned with the New Jersey standards. So we curated a list of resources at that time. We interviewed four providers. We interviewed four like districts. And when COVID struck, we decided instead of putting the work aside, we could just pivot it a little bit so we wouldn't have too much stretch attention. And that's when we decided to focus on targeting our curriculum. So since then, we've learned from each other using action research with the guided protocol that Dr. Rachel Brown is going to introduce.
Hey. Is it still presenting? Because I can't see it. Sorry.
No, sorry. Thank you.
Tech issues. So I, in a past life, did professional development with beginning high school math and science teachers and currently work with pre-service teachers. And a tool that I have found useful is to use a protocol, which is a structured conversation to keep the discussion focused and to make sure the goal and the intent of our discussion doesn't veer off. When you get teachers together, we have lots of things to talk about, right? There are lots of things to discuss. And so it's useful to have the structured process. The one we used was sharing warm and cool feedback with the presenter around data from whatever they were experimenting and trying in their classrooms. And the results of the work for the elementary level, there was a realignment that happened. Everyday math isn't quite matched with the standards. And so the teachers worked really hard to create mini-units and fill in any gaps that exist in the textbook materials. In addition, they created assessments in Linkit. And so there was improvement with data analysis. And then the middle and high school teachers worked on assessment and really considered using alternative-style assessments to assess how students are doing and alternative ways to see what students know about the material they're teaching. And so the group will share, or various groups are going to share specific examples of these results.
Thank you. And so to introduce the K5 focus, Angela Lloyd is filling in for Valerie Klein.
Hi, everyone. At the elementary level, when the committee began last year, we asked for feedback from the elementary teachers about their thoughts in regards to the Everyday Math 4 program. And the themes that kept coming up at that elementary level with the Everyday Math program was that it wasn't aligned in a logical flowing order that allowed for mastery and that in many of the cases, there were not enough lessons to teach specific skills. So many of us realigned our curriculum or lessons to group the standards together. In addition, we added lessons to teach specific skills while incorporating differentiated ways to meet learners' visual and tactile needs, as well as provided math tools to help teach and support students. In addition, during our monthly meetings that Rachel was talking about, we discussed many different topics with, using the protocol. While sharing the additional lessons we created and through the protocol, we realized that we really needed to use consistent language across the grade levels for the children to better understand skills in the following year. It was also important to see, for us to see and discuss the skills that were taught before and after each of our grade levels. So we had an opportunity to better understand where the children were coming to us or leaving us mathematically. And then finally, tonight, you're going to see what the different elementary grades added. But as a whole, by realigning the curriculum and the addition of lessons, it created a more focused learning for many of the skills taught in the grade levels in the elementary level.
Thank you. And next up, we have Kelsey Kennedy and Katie Green to talk about kindergarten and first grade work.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Kennedy and I teach kindergarten at Central. My focus on the committee was to focus and explore place value. By the end of kindergarten, we want students to compose and decompose numbers from 11 to 19 into a group of 10 and some further ones. This can be very difficult for students to understand. So with that being said, I created a place value mini-unit. These are additional lessons that are now added to the curriculum in order to explicitly teach this concept. We focus on counting and building numbers in base 10, comparing numbers, and also decomposing teen numbers. As you can see in the picture, we use double 10 frames to show there is one group of 10 plus three more ones equals 13. Along with every lesson, I created an exit ticket. And this helps me understand where my students are at, what students need more support. And on our end-of-the-year cumulative assessment, 81% of students answered these place value questions correctly. So overall, it was a success. And now the students will have exposure as well as a good foundation of place value before they enter first grade.
Hi, my name is Katie Green. I'm a first grade teacher at Central School. Thank you for having us tonight. In first grade, we continue to piggyback off of what Mrs. Kennedy said. The students at first grade by the end should understand place value. So having the ability to identify each place value in a number and also understand adding and subtracting with place value. So when they add and subtract, really have that understanding of what is happening with the numbers. Our lessons were kind of a variety of lessons that talk about, first, most importantly, you know, what the places are. So we explicitly taught about the hundreds, tens, and ones place. With that, then we had a lot of review. I, you know, really appreciated the feedback I got from a lot of the members of this committee because it was wonderful to see some of the tools and strategies they were using. In the slide here, you can see the H2O, HTO, sorry, that colleague had suggested using that they do in second grade. So I added that to first grade to my lesson. So I think that the feedback I gained during our meetings was really important. We also had a lot of games. And of course, it was vocalized that money was an area of weakness in the first grade curriculum. So we included some additional money lessons. In the beginning of the year, I assessed the students with a place value assessment and the average score was a 45%. I recently assessed them and we had improved the score to an 83%. So everyone, you know, has a class average or mastery of an understanding of the unit. I wanted to share a student response that was the same student that responded to a question, the open-ended question at the end, which was, why is 46 greater than 42? The student in the fall had responded, because it is a bigger number, not knowing that place value existed. Their response this past May was 46 is greater because it has four more ones than 42. So that is why 46 is greater than 42. So they really had an understanding of number sense and where numbers come from. And, you know, it was a really wonderful success.
Thank you so much, Kelsey and Katie. And next up, we have Lisa Murphy and Angela Lloyd to talk about second and third grade.
Hi, everyone. So I'm actually going to piggyback off of Katie. We did talk a little bit about money. And that was one of the things that we found was a shortcoming in the lessons for second grade, as well as the fact that like the students come in and they're introduced to the penny, nickel, and dime. And then we bring in the quarter in second grade. So if they don't have a really good foundation of those other coins of how to count them and recognize them, and it doesn't carry through, they have a difficult time with the quarter. So in doing some research, I came across what is called touch money, which is similar to touch math in that it's tactile and touch, they can use their hands to count the coins. So as you notice under the penny, there's one line. So they would touch that and know that that's just worth one cent. And then on the nickel, dime, and quarter, they use a red dot to count by five. So the nickel would just get one red dot in the center. The dime gets a dot at the top and the bottom, so that's touching for five and 10. And then there's five strategically placed dots on the quarter. So they make it in a Z form and they count five, 10, 15, 20, 25. So this is a skill that helps them with skip counting, but it also helps them with counting the coins, especially as they start to go on and not only have to recognize the coin, but count coins, make coin values to represent different values of items they might purchase or eventually to make change. So in my teaching this with the students, as well as my grade partners, we learned that all students were using this and they were finding this method effective for them. And if the dots were not provided for them, like on the assessment that you see there, we provided the dots for a few of them and then later on, we didn't put the dots on. And we learned that the students became so familiar with it, they started to put the dots on the coins themselves to represent the values of each of the coins. So, you know, it definitely has supported their learning as far as like end-of-the-year assessments. I didn't have those pictures to put up here, but I do want to say that it did positively impact the students. And then through our conversations with the math committee, we figured out that, you know, we're talking about common language, that it would be good to start introducing that penny with the line under it from kindergarten. And then as they learn the nickel and dime in first grade, they would add those dots on. And then it would be something more familiar and a buildable skill as they come on into second grade. Trying to think if I forgot anything on there. Yeah, so I think that's pretty much covers it all. And I did link a couple of the different lessons that I included that I taught the students, that we taught the students, I should say.
Yeah, hi. Hi again. In third grade, a major skill in third grade is learning multiplication and division. And when I realigned the curriculum, I realized that there was very, very few lessons, one to two lessons on that strand and talking about division and really understanding the nuts and bolts of what division is. So I added two to three lessons sometime, two to three lessons exploring division, including the arrangement of division problems, as well as the vocabulary that's used. In Everyday Math, there was one lesson that really just had them exploring division. We scaffolded lessons, including digital task cards and hands-on activities, as well as understanding the connection between multiplication and division with the use of fact families. And we introduced this back in October. So we've really had a great deal of time to have the students work with multiplication, which they have become very familiar with, and then moved on to division and use those fact families to help them with their division facts. And it's interesting to hear more often when the children talk in a group or even amongst themselves if they're trying to figure out a division problem, they'll say, oh, you have to think of like, what's nine times what's 36? So they really have that strong background of the fact families. And then that last column shows just a little assessment data. I created a short Linkit assessment to assess their learning after these few lessons, after they were directly taught. And you can see that 95, we scored a 95%. And you can see the progression of mastery for this specific strand on the benchmark A, B, and C. There's three questions on benchmark A, benchmark B, and benchmark C. And you can see the progression of their understanding as the year has gone on.
Next up, we have Ontu and Mary to talk about fourth and fifth grade.
Hi, my name is Ontu Nguyen. I teach fourth grade at Lizzie Haddon. In fourth grade math, students explore fractions more deeply. And there is a lot of work that involves working with mixed numbers. In the Everyday Math program, though, students are taught how to add and subtract mixed numbers. But there isn't a formal lesson that allows students to explore how mixed numbers and improper fractions are equivalent and even how to convert between the two forms, both of which are important skills when students eventually add and subtract mixed numbers and then multiply fractions and whole numbers and solve word problems with fractions and mixed numbers as well. So one change that was made to the fourth grade scope and sequence was adding a few days of direct instruction and providing opportunities for students to practice converting mixed numbers and improper fractions in isolation before generalizing the skill to word problems. Students in my class specifically worked with fraction circles, which helped provide a visual model for those who benefited from seeing things more, working with more tactile objects. We also practiced with some task cards so that students could practice the skill in isolation first before applying it to word problems. So those teeny-tiny screenshots there are of the exit tickets that we use to assess post-student growth. And overall, those students across the district, or fourth grade students across the district demonstrated growth from their Linkit A form benchmark to Linkit Form C. In September, when they took Form A, 33 to 48% of fourth grade students across the district answered those questions correctly involving mixed numbers. And then fast forward to May, when students take Form C, that percentage increased to 78 to 99% of fourth graders who answered correctly. So the Linkit scores can show some growth that fourth graders have demonstrated with the additional days of instruction and practice. And overall, just from a teacher perspective, I felt like students were much more confident in solving those challenging word problems because they got those additional days of practice beforehand.
Hi, I'm Mary Hall. I teach fifth grade. And obviously, I piggybacked off of Ontu because one of our biggest units in fifth grade is fractions. And I know in fourth grade, they do common denominators and we kind of go into unlike common, unlike denominators. And one of the things I noticed with them was having them be able to find equivalent fractions, being able to rename fractions, and finding like the lowest common denominator. So with the Everyday Math program, there are only a few lessons on that. So one of the things I did when I realigned it was I added additional lessons. As you can see, I did a lot of reviewing originally with just like denominators. Then we moved into fraction circles just so they could see the visual component of it. Then I had them do a little bit of modeling, independent work. I also created some Google Forms, digital task cards that these children could do. One of the big things that they really enjoyed was actually the coloring pixel pictures where they actually had to solve problems. And they would get immediate feedback if the answer was correct. Some of the pixels would appear. If it didn't, it gave them that feedback that they did something wrong. The other thing I did too was I added a few Linkits throughout the year in addition to the main benchmarks that we have to do because I kind of wanted to assess to see if they were making progress besides just the usual like, you know, observation, the digital task cards and things like that. And if you notice, I had did a Linkit there and they did score 83 to 98% on the two main questions that I was focusing in that particular unit on fractions. We do exit tickets in fifth grade. The other thing is obviously the task cards. You see a picture. When we did Form A back in September, the students were at 34 to 36% for the whole district for fifth grade. I shared my lessons with the other fifth grade math teachers, certainly got their feedback, the feedback from the math committee, and created all these different activities and extensions to the unit. And as you can see, when they went to Form C, the students in fifth grade across the district scored 90 to 92%, which was a huge success for me just because I know how hard fractions are for fourth and fifth graders. So to see that this is a unit where a lot of kids sort of are afraid of, to see that by putting all those lessons together into one unit that was aligned with the standards, I just feel like was such a huge benefit for the kids. And as you can see from the scores, was a success for them.
Thank you, Mary and Ontu. And next we have a secondary level. Dr. Russo is going to talk about the middle school work. Or just introduce it, sorry, Karen.
She has gifted and talented expo tonight.
I'm so sorry. So next up, we have Maya Argano is going to talk about her work with assessments and alignment.
Hi, good evening. My name is Maya Argano. I teach-
I teach sixth grade at the middle school, sixth grade math. In the slide beforehand, Dr. Russo was going to just kind of briefly talk about how we focused, Daria and I focused on different ways to target areas of growth and also ways to keep our students engaged. So by creating alternate assessments. Therefore, I decided to develop an alternate assessment for students in an area and skill that I knew was a struggle for many, especially last year. The assessment, which was more of an activity, incorporated the game of Clue, where the students were required to solve the mystery of Mr. Tribute while demonstrating their knowledge and understanding on combining like terms and the distributive property, hence Mr. Tribute. It allowed the students to feel more at ease and less stressed about taking a traditional paper and pencil assessment, and instead allow them to become more engaged and even focused. Students continuously asked me to have another clue assessment, so I kind of think that was a win overall, right there. Students asking for another assessment. And as you can see where it says overall, the benchmark A and benchmark B, those are all of the standards for expressions and equations, which involve the skills that were used on the assessment. And those were before the assessment and the interactive notebook were, was given to the students. And then benchmark C was the one that was most recently taken after the assessment was given. And then down at the bottom, oh, sorry. Down at the bottom was just a quick little screenshot that I took. If anyone has played the game of Clue, there is the who, what, where, and students had to solve on an interactive Google slide presentation, different real world word problems and other examples or problems, equations, expressions, and then start crossing off the puzzle to find out the who, what, and where of Mr. Tribute. I also brought up some math articulation data that was, we started for fifth and sixth grade teachers a year prior. And as we all know, math is a subject that builds upon itself from year to year, kind of like building blocks. Therefore, if the foundation of a skill or a concept isn't mastered, then each layer of those blocks ultimately will be weakened. And since there is so many overlaps of content and skills taught or reviewed per grade, we found that mainly due to textbooks or just not really having that communication, that, or like even with the length, specific language that is used and not having that communication, there's kind of those gaps. So we decided that hopefully next year, even as math committee or as the entire math department, we would, sorry if I'm. We trust that next year, we'll talk about as an entire math committee or even math department, what is being taught in previous grades and the grades after hours, just so that we can kind of fix those transitions between each. And it kind of stems not just from fifth grade into sixth grade, or from eighth grade into the high school, but even goes all the way back from the first grade or kindergarten teachers teaching place value and using different language than we do in sixth grade or in grades afterwards. So I'm looking forward to continuing to develop engaging assessments that the students asked to have more of in the next few years. You're welcome.
Thanks, Maya. Next we have Daria. She's going to talk about assessments as well.
Hi, everyone. I am Daria Resnick. I teach Algebra I and Geometry at the middle school. And despite how stressful this year was, it was always nice to come together as a committee and just talk about observations and things that we noticed and our different approaches to teaching and how it would help our students learn. And I know a big takeaway from this committee is that it helped me step out of my comfort zone and think of different ways to assess our students. The traditional paper pencil assessment was getting more and more difficult to administer as we went from hybrid to virtual to back to hybrid, back to virtual. So in December, I designed a project that had students choose between two different cars and compare their cost over time. They had to research factors like gas mileage, insurance, monthly maintenance costs. And then they used all that information, they graphed, they created lines, graphed them, compared them, and answered some questions about if they would still buy the car that they wanted. And in the past, this skill was just, was always assessed on a paper pencil test. And this year, it was nice that they were able to make a real life connection. They also started to learn the value of a dollar and very like, hopefully now realize that, you know, a Tesla isn't just something you just, you know, can just go out and purchase. So that was really nice. And then on the slide, you'll just see just some pros of the, of a project-based assessment. Oh, the one before that, but you probably read that as I was talking. Just, you know, all the different things that a project-based learning approach helps us do. So I just, in the, we're often asked as math teachers, when will I use this in the real world? So it was nice to be able to show students a project where that question could be answered. And I look forward to continuing to design more assessments that, assessments, projects that will allow students to answer the question for themselves. And yeah, this last slide just is one example of a student's work and their answer and interpretation, which was nice. But thank you.
Thank you, Daria. Next we have Dan Lucata is going to introduce the work of the high school.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me okay. My computer with 40% charge just died, so I'm on iPhone. But just a quick thanks to everyone, the members of the board, as well as Mr. Klaus and Dr. Friolo. This has certainly been a challenging year, but everyone's support has really made it so much easier for us as administrators and in conjunction with our staff to get through this year. So thank you to everyone. But I do want to take the time to introduce Mrs. Michelle Preacher. She was our high school representative on the math committee. Ms. Preacher teaches CP Algebra I all the way through multi-variable calculus, which is our highest level math course at the high school, along with BC Calc on the way. And she is appropriately critical and reflective of her own practice, and she's, she's always willing to share with her colleagues in the math department. And I really appreciate when somebody who teaches such a wide range of classes is always willing to, you know, to be open to discussions, to modify practice, and to be self-reflective and to ultimately for the, to meet the needs of our students. So very much excited that she was on the committee this year and thankful for all of her work. The two main themes that Ms. Preacher tackled are assessment, that's the one that she's going to be speaking about this evening, and modifying these assessments, make them more real world, to make them more collaborative and project-based, and really to be student-centered with a focus and emphasis on feedback. So she'll, she'll be speaking about that shortly. But as Dr. Murray mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, you know, one of the things that we wanted to get to with the committee was to have a great way to make sure that we are vetting our sources and being hypercritical of the sources that we are bringing into our district and using district funds to purchase. And I think one of the big benefits from this checklist that we did get to at the high school, that Ms. Preacher got to at the high school, was an email recently that actually said the words "under budget" as a, as a compliment, which we always like as, as a district. So thank you, Ms. Preacher, for your contributions and willingness to participate in the math committee, and I'll let you talk a bit here about assessments. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lucata. Hi, everyone. My name's Michelle Preacher, and I teach CP Algebra I at the high school. So I used my time this year on the committee to restructure the assessments in Algebra I. So in an effort to address the constraints of remote test-taking, I wanted to structure assessments that supported the thoughtful explanations and creative responses of the students. So I used the platform Desmos to do that. And one of my favorite features of that platform is the feedback. So students were able to start their assessment, begin their responses, see my private individualized feedback to them, and then make adjustments to their answers before receiving a grade. So you can see the samples on the slide show you my feedback, and then the edited student responses below. I really feel that the students have grown in their ability to explain themselves, and I feel like most importantly, they've built a ton of confidence because of this private feedback feature. So I very much appreciated my time on the committee. I hope to build on it next year and to find creative ways to improve it even more. So thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, and thank you, everyone. In conclusion, we think that the committee design is a model for future lesson analysis using a guided protocol. We liked that our unit of analysis was on the standards and not really on the program. And we liked that teachers are taking on that challenge of transitioning to less, to more intensive test-making that involves getting away from the cheatable tests of the past. And we see that the collaboration was pretty solid, and there was a high payoff and supportive collaboration with grade-level department and articulation teams. These are some of the takeaways. I really liked, one said, seeing, hearing how math is taught in other grade levels to see continuity and connections, and how skills progress and build over time. Another said, I love making connections and learning more about the curriculum of other grade levels. Now I can use a common language. So we feel that it was a fruitful use of our time this year. We're looking ahead to the next year's committee because we never really did, you know, look at, we never really did get new textbook resources, especially to replace the everyday math. So we are still continuing our work, some new committee members. We have 12 teachers, four administrators, nine students, 30 parents, guardians, and constituents working. We're going to fan out into a couple of different subgroups. We'll look at those textbooks. We're going to examine the skills tree a little bit more closely. We're going to really hone in on learner experience, because we want to make sure that our students have access and they're included, and there's rigor for all students. And we also want to make sure that we have authentic, transferable learning experiences. So the structure of that committee is, we're going to continue the monthly meetings, and then subcommittees will also meet probably on a monthly basis as well. And by next June, we'll have recommendations for the committee. In the meantime, we're having a book study. The teachers already have their hard copy of the book called Mathematical Mindset. It's the, the theme is the growth mindset. So the introduction is from Carol Dweck, which if you know the growth mindset, she's the queen. I think you'll like it. Kathy Decampley of the Haddonfield Public Library said they have unlimited audio books. I'd love it if anybody wants to read along with us. So thank you so much. That's all we have. Are there any questions?
I'm glad you acknowledged the deficiencies of everyday math, because it was certainly acknowledged in the slides. Is there anything out there? I mean, it sounds like there was an effectiveness of filling the gaps, but I didn't really see this filling the gaps, since you're extending, you're extending the lessons to kind of meet the learner. Is there anything out there?
Yeah, I mean, you know, before COVID hit, we, we did hone in on investigations is, is really deep learning for students. We also looked at illustrative math. We looked at Ready Math, but we felt that that was, and the folks in another district, I'll not name the name, but it's similar to Haddonfield, said that they found it was too scripted. But that's like a really popular one, Ready Math. So we're trying to make sure that whatever we take is not scripted enough, that we lose teacher voice, student voice, Haddonfield voice. But we do think that we have several on the, on the dock.
And that's why we extended everyday math in the first place, was that language bridge from fifth to sixth grade. And it seemed that you've been able to tackle that in a different way, and it sounds pretty effective. So I just don't know, but hopefully you don't lose in trying to gain, you know?
Thank you so much.
I don't want to stifle questions, but I want to say thank you to everyone. This was an all-hands-on-deck presentation at 7:30. But thank you to everyone who joined in and presented. It was very thorough, very followable, and very informative. Thank you for all being here for that stuff. Just a collective wow. Yeah, it was great. Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing it. Thanks for doing it. So I didn't want to kill the questions if you weren't in. Okay. Mrs. Metoso is going to give us a quick presentation. I think everyone else from the math community should jump up and enjoy their evening.
I already have.
Since you preface with the word quick, I would first like to thank the Board of Education. I met with the Curriculum Committee back in May, and this has been a project that's actually been ongoing and really is what I would consider the final block of the strategic plan that both Karen Russo and I put together with our staff, with multiple subcommittees, with our faculty advisory council, that has really come to fruition since 2017. It seems absurd that it's only been four years, but I think the middle school has really done so many wonderful things as a result of your support, and certainly with the work of all the staff. So when we looked at the family engagement piece, it was very important for us to talk specifically about conferences. And we focused on conferences because in all actuality, we were losing about seven and a half hours of instruction, to give up 400-plus minutes of instruction to meet with families. So when we drilled down how many families we were actually meeting, and what the depth and breadth of those conversations were occurring, was it really worth losing that much instructional time? And these were the essential questions that we posed to ourselves and sought to answer over the course of the past two years, so that we, we would come up with an authentic answer. What is the goal of a parent-teacher conference? Are there systems in place to support all learners? Were ongoing and systemic conversations and progress monitoring systems to support learners? What did we gain via parent-teacher conference? Is anything lost by removing a parent-teacher conference? Students are not involved, why not? So we've spent the past three and a half years answering those questions. Thank you, Dr. Friolo. The conference specs, and this is a very abbreviated version of a lengthier presentation that we did share at the curriculum committee. I'm happy to share that lengthier presentation that provided a little bit more drilled down to the specs specifically. But overall, our conferences have been scheduled on an elementary schedule and a trimester format that the middle school has not followed and does not follow. We are four quarters. We are much more aligned with a K to, K to 12 philosophy than a K to eight philosophy. So it was important for us to really consider that transition and understanding the philosophy of middle school and how we sought to communicate effectively with our families. So when you look at the calendar, December is aligned with the elementary trimester. In our world, 62 days have already occurred prior to the scheduling of a conference. That is a lot of time to miss if you have an issue with a child, or if you have a concern about a student's progress in class. We're already entering the, the middle of the second quarter where interim reports went out. So when we just looked at the pragmatic aspects of the calendar, it didn't make sense to, to offer conferences, particularly in that realm. When we looked again, we operate on a quarterly assessment schedule that reflects more of a six to 12 program, and that has really ultimately been our goal. We lose a full day of instruction for 623 students at the expense of either an eight or 12-minute conference for up to 40 students per staff member. We lost more than we gained. Current data based on this past year and when we met with the curriculum committee, I think we had the past three years of data. December 2020, 623 students enrolled, average class size is 25, average total number of students per class, per teacher, caseload, if you will, about 115. Special areas, those teachers seat everybody, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, world language, art, tech, PE, and health. Poor subjects, English, math, science, social studies, approximately 115. Counselors are responsible for each of their students, average 206. Forty available individual conference slots per teacher, 10 minutes per conference, the average number of conference per staff, 23, per counselor, 14. We're still not maximizing any contact time in order to have meaningful, authentic conferences to achieve what a conference is supposed to achieve, at least at the middle level, when we were looking at the philosophy of having those conferences. Nature, family, and teacher collaboration in real time. So what is it that we do to effectively communicate with our families if we're not having conferences or looking to remove them? Ongoing family in contact impacts student outcomes, and we know that. We know that family-staff collaboration is required to nurture, empower, inspire, inspire all learners. And then we took a look at all the systems and the routines and the procedures that we already have in place for our learners. We looked at our special populations. So our gifted students, our students on INRS, or our at-risk students, students with 504 plans in our IUP students, meet annually with members of their various teams to look at progress monitoring. We set goals, we see if we've achieved goals, or we institute further accommodations or modifications intervention, or tier one through three RTI model intervention to support those learners. Our middle learners, also the focus, I didn't know what to call those kids, the kids who come to school every day and they go to school, they're not necessarily in a special population, but you know, we want to make sure that all of the adults and all of the people who are nurturing those children also have the opportunity to have meaningful, authentic engagement with staff. We have the addition of Family Curriculum Night, where we meet with all of our families in a more of a global setting, and we speak to our programming. That was something that we instituted two years ago, it hadn't been done prior. We have a program of studies. We have family orientations in August. We also started to do a much more, I'll use the word robust, a robust program with math staff from fifth grade through eighth grade, as well as language arts staff, seventh grade through eighth grade, when making recommendations. When we make a recommendation for a student to go into an accelerated class or a non-accelerated class, or to take a look at a more restrictive environment with regard to remediation, then we're engaging families in conversations that are very specific to skill acquisition and development. And when we take the opportunity to do that, And when we take the opportunity to do that, that takes the place of a conference because we're focusing on that child's learning, the child's needs and a plan moving forward. Student-led conferencing can be implemented into our benchmarking development and shared out organically with families systemically throughout the year. And I think if anything showed that that can be done, it would be this past year through the various platforms on Google. But one of the signature components that our sixth graders like and our seventh graders start to get bored, so we're looking for alternative means when you look at things like Flipgrid, when our students can share information with their families, create a video for themselves, have engagement and interaction, and look to have students be able to share portfolios and their own reflection of their own growth with their families. Family teacher partnership, the Haddonfield School District mindset empowers ongoing communication that's timely and ongoing, and our teachers have dedicated preparatory periods within their school day to meet with families. And again, if Dave is unable to come into the building, or Heather is in a, in a meeting in another state, we can have a Google Meet and have all the adults on the screen at the same time and include the child if necessary. Beginning the parent or reimagining the parent teacher conference is something that Harvard put out and something that our faculty advisory council will be unpacking in the fall so that we look to kind of reimagine or re-envision what a middle schooler should be able to do with regard to reflective practice and reflective learning and sharing that out with their families and with their various adults in the building. 2021 and beyond, something I think is important to note is the overall change of our master schedule. All teachers will have five classes, five classes allowed for smaller learning environments in the classroom, smaller learning environment, the hope would be more intimate understanding and interaction with our students. Prep periods again available for staff or ongoing family meetings, especially for at-risk students who will be observed through various benchmarking that will occur in September. So when the board approves the data days, we use those data days in September to make lists, for lack of a better way of putting it, to really identify our students who are struggling with adequate annual progress and so that we know what interventions need to be implemented in the classroom, in the curriculum. Routinely scheduled INRS meetings, progress monitoring for at-risk students, and again, 504 meetings and IEP, GNT meetings for our special populations. But we also have counseling groups, monthly advisories and opportunities to provide content-specific insight, again, when we go into the recommendation process for our classes. INRS, the HMS staff is well versed in the needs of students who may require those tier one to two interventions. That's just another way of saying we know how to work individually with our students who may struggle with reading, literacy and math. Being seen and heard is also a significant belief in our middle school and our philosophy that some students enter our classroom, do what they need to do and leave, and we need to work to create and sustain realistic systems for engaging those students and to connect with our families through partnership. And again, the benefits of virtual Google Meets post-hybrid to engage families regularly, not, not once for 62 days into the school year. That is absolutely something that benefits the elementary level. It's not aligned really with our schedule, our assessment schedule, and how we need to make sure that we identify our students who are struggling, but also open communication with all of our, all 623 families to showcase our students. I don't know if that was as quick as.
I have two questions.
Sure, Heather.
I saw that you highlighted a lot of the challenges with the current system, but I'm not sure, or at least I know I didn't get clear recommendations. Are you still evaluating things or what are the specific? I've seen things that could be done, what Harvard recommend, like what, what's the recommendation coming up with this?
I'm not, I'm not sure I understand.
Are you recommending changing?
Oh, recommend, we're recommending removing the conferences.
Totally.
Totally.
And so my second question was, is with everybody involved in this, have you had any like parent input?
So when we meet with our faculty advisory council, we also have worked with members of our PTA and other members of our family unit. We also happen to have family members who are part of our staff. And having been through as a parent as well, having been through the process myself for three years, that's really where I was questioning the role of the conferences because when I was one of 15, 15 parents in a room having a six-minute conversation with a teacher, it wasn't beneficial in multiple ways. And then what Karen and I did was to streamline having a little bit more individuality and confidentiality. And still, when we got feedback from parents who participated this year in asking like, hey, why didn't you want to pop onto a Google Meet? They felt that they had had so much conversation and so many meetings and emails and phone calls and even Google Meets in the fall prior, that having a conference in December wasn't necessary.
Yeah, I, I will agree that from everything I ever heard from personal middle school conference, a lot of parents didn't find them very helpful. My initial reaction though is that I don't think people will be thrilled that they're gone without clear outlines for either frequency of contact or if the parent doesn't reach out to the teacher, how frequently will the, so you mentioned you want more interaction, but to me, I think, you know, there might be several that, you know, would want something more defined.
Yeah, and one of the goals, again, we have our August orientation, then this year we have back to school night, back on the books. Those are all the things that we outlined with regard to how that, how those conversations will happen, as well as teachers reaching out to families because Karen and I will work on very specific criteria when we benchmark the kids in the fall and start reaching out to our families and what that's going to look like because that absolutely has to happen before the 62nd day of school for it to be effective.
Right, I think you effectively described what it's turned into a ritual instead of, you know, something that's a value, a tradition. So I heard the word benchmark a few times in my brain, I kept popping Lincoln Benchmark A and the timing of that. So is, is the timing of that early feedback taken into account? Because it wasn't, it wasn't explicit.
Yeah, so what will happen, so I'll just pick an arbitrary date, let's say September 17th. So September 17th is Lincoln Benchmark A, the 23rd, some date like that, September is the first data date, and then two days later, we have counselors, Karen and I working through and saying, let's get our list and let's see where we start and who we start with. So that's before October 1st. We're not even halfway through the quarter by the time that happens.
Sure, and that sounds more appropriate.
Yep.
The other comment I'm going to have, kind of goes to the be seen and heard, right? So 50 Cent has a, has a saying that says, if I'm the smartest person in the room, I'm in the wrong room.
Right.
At the high school level, that's what co-curriculars.
Is that really, I don't think that's 50 Cent, is it?
I heard him say it. I'm giving the credit.
I think it wasn't the originator, but.
All right, well, hey. I don't, I don't want to say it the way he said it, but yeah, I said it. The point being that by the, high school, that's what co-curriculars for, right? Is to re-engage students that have lost engagement. So sometimes school is the means to do the sport or the play or anything like that. Is that kind of what you're trying to target on and you're saying create realistic systems for engaging our families? Is that more of that kind of behavior?
Because there are also, I don't know that I necessarily want to talk about my child's academic growth. I might be more concerned with their social emotional growth. Who do I contact to have those conversations? Those are our counselors, those could be our nurses, those could be our coaches. If we have students whose trusted adults are their advisors in the Dungeons and Dragons Club, then how do we put those conversations together so that parents who think they have children who might struggle with making friends, but we see that differently and how to, how to engage those things much more authentically than the way they're currently organized? And that's one of the goals of our faculty advisory council for September.
So conferences ain't won, right? Just to, just to put a bow on that. Right, I mean, I, for example, if it weren't for seat perch, you know, one of my children would have just checked out a big.
And some kids come to school because of orchestras. Some kids come to school because they see somebody who makes them feel good about themselves. And those are the kids who, when we know their names and we know where they're going and we know how to plug their parents or their families into getting to know them the same way that we do.
Sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll look up who said it.
All right.
You should have two attachments to the board agenda. One is the year-end report, the biannual, 2020, 21 biannual presenting report on HIV, and also a list of the 2020, 21 anti-bullying programs and activities by school. Does anyone need or prefer to have a hard copy to follow? I have two copies.
I love one. Sorry. It's a little warm.
So I have to thank you, Gracie, for getting these on the agenda in advance because it's easier to read sometimes with Screamis and Tony. So thanks.
Anyone else?
No, thank you.
All right, so there are two reporting periods. One is, this year was September 1st to December 10th, at which time I provided the statistics for the first session of the year. Period two, December 11th through June 30th, although we're at June 10th right now, school's not out and it's quite possible that we might have more allegations made. Today I received another case that did not proceed to investigation, that is not in these statistics, but when I post this report tomorrow, it'll be updated. I also, we also have another case in the high school pending, and when that is completed, it'll be reflected in this report. New Jersey law states that the superintendent shall report to the Haddonfield Borough School District Board of Education all acts of harassment, intimidation or bullying which occurred during the previous reporting period. Next slide. Thank you, Chris. This list tells you who our anti-bullying specialists are in each school. On the coordinator, Central has Jamie Ledford, Haddon, Diane Wallace, Tatum, Jessica Plasniak, Central Emmy Probs, Central Middle Emmy Probs, and Haddonfield High School, Colin Gusbarry. Next slide. These are the trainings that each of our anti-bullying specialists take, and each time someone drops out and we hire someone else to take the role, they have to go through the same training. Next slide. Okay, threshold, this is the, the four areas that need to be satisfied for an allegation to move from an allegation to an investigation. If one of these items are not satisfied in the initial assessment, then the report does not move to a full investigation and the matter is handled as a code of conduct violation. Any questions on that? Okay, these four items, in essence, is the definition for HIV. Okay, next slide. This page is a review. This is what I presented back in December. We had, we received a total of five reports and the schools are listed here. Next slide. This is a summary sheet of District One data. So we received a total number of five reports and two did not advance for a full investigation, one case from Central, there was no perceived or distinguishing characteristic, and one at Tatum for the same reason. Those were the reasons why the case did not proceed to a full investigation. The total number of reports that passed the initial assessment and were investigated equals three, and one was at the high school. The distinguished, the, the basis of their harassment was sexual orientation. One was from Tatum and it was based on race, and one was, again, another one at the high school, also based on race. The total number of cases that were shown to be HIV or confirmed HIV was one, and that was at the high school and it involved race. Next slide. This is just a percentage chart that indicates what we just reviewed. So two cases based on race, 66.6%, one on sexual orientation, 33.3%. Next slide. It's just another form of presenting the confirmed HIV cases for period one. One case at the high school. Next slide. Now for period two, we received a total number of eight reports, none from Haddon, three from Central, two from Tatum, one from the middle school and two from the high school. Next slide. So we received, we received eight reports of HIV or eight allegations. The number of reports that did not advance to investigation equals five. One from Central, we could not identify the aggressor. Even though pictures of the aggressor were taken, we could, those students did not attend here. I sent out pictures to area school districts to see if we could identify who these girls were, and we did not, we weren't not able to identify who they were. Tatum had two cases that did not advance to an investigation, one because there was no substantial disruption or impact on the target, and one case where there was no distinguishing characteristic. The middle school had one case, there was no substantial disruption or impact on the target. Basically, it was some teasing based on the way a name was being spelled. And we had one case at the high school, there was no substantial disruption or impact on the target, and that involved gender. The total number of reports that passed the initial assessment and were investigated equals three. One case at the high school and involved race. One case, and two cases at Central, one involving ancestry and the other one involving race. So, but the total number of cases that were found to be HIV or confirmed HIV was one, that was at the high school and that involved race. Next slide. Any questions so far? Okay, just let me know if I'm going a little too fast. And the next page is just the percentage chart again. Two involved race, 66.6%, one involved, one case of ancestry, and those were our three alleged HIBs that moved to investigation. There was only one case that was confirmed to be HIV, and that was at the high school. Next slide. And this slide shows just one case. Next slide. This is the summary data for the whole school year. We received a total report, a total number of reports equals 13. These are just allegations that come to a principal. The total number of reports that did not pass the initial assessment equals seven. So the total number of reports investigated for HIV in all schools equals six. Two at Central, both were not confirmed to be HIV, none at Haddon, one at Tatum, which was not HIV, none at the middle school, and the high school had three cases that were investigated, two were confirmed to be HIV and one not HIV. So the total number of confirmed HIV among all schools for the school year equals two. They were both at the high school. Next slide. And this is just, again, another percentage chart that represents the data. Four cases, four cases involved race, and I say I didn't put the percentage down there. And I have to adjust this a little. Sorry about that. Next slide. This chart represents confirmed cases of HIV. We had two involving race. And next slide. The next several slides just repeats, but this is the model for the presentation that I. But this is the model for the presentation that I should follow. And that's it. So on the other document that's attached, you'll find the programs, activities, and trainings that the, each school engaged in this year, even while we were remote, to try to prevent HIV from occurring in our schools. These activities promote a positive school climate and culture, equity, and diversity, and also respect. Any questions?
Maybe I thought this was great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I don't know if you know the answer to this, or possibly, I don't know, many other administrators would. How do our numbers per student population compare perhaps to state average or day districts? Like, I'm just curious. You know, I'm thinking if our numbers are lower, maybe that shows successful programs.
Well, our numbers are very low. I think that's because our schools do an excellent job in teaching students how they should behave. And our parents also. It's very difficult to compare our statistics to that of another school district, and I'll explain why. This year, we had two cases where it was an inter-district case, where it either was our aggressor and their victims, or their aggressor and our victim. And we were shocked, or I was shocked, and the anti-bullying specialists shocked in the way that these other districts approach HIV. I think that they do not, at least from the experience with these two districts, they do not take it as seriously as we take it. And I think that sends a very strong message out to the student population. You know, that, you know, if you disrespect someone, you're going to be called up on HIV. And I think the kids know it. I don't, I can't say it's the same for these other two districts that we had this experience, but that was just my impression. So to look at their numbers, the amount, the numbers that they present, if they present, they may have zero, but they may have a lot of HIV going on.
But Sandy, each, every district, every building has a score, correct? Every did, every building has a score. At the end of the year, we accumulate all our data.
Yeah.
And you get a score.
Yeah.
And every state, every building, every school in the state has it. So there is a measure of comparison. It's not just a number of cases, it's also other things that we do as well.
Yeah, like these programs. But I just don't know how valid it is if they're not reporting HIV.
Yeah.
You know, so we, so other districts may, may show that they're doing just as well as we are, but I don't know if that's the case.
You have, you actually by law have to have these numbers posted on the website. So you can go to any school district, basically pull up your HIV and see the scores. But the score is not just a number of cases, it's also programs you have and stuff like that. So it's a cumulative score of efforts as well as addressing these issues.
First of all, I think Sandy does things with, like, I think you do this extraordinarily well and with integrity all the way through. And I mean, you following the rules, taking the law seriously, not cutting corners to get to our things. I also have to say, I think, and not to you, Sandy, I'm saying this to the board. I think the HIV law is probably the worst law having anything to do with schools I've ever seen. I've actually, I've been watching it for years now, and it actually hinders, ruins our school's ability to handle code of conduct, conduct issues. Because if a student has a problem, a bullying problem, there are all of these rules that we have to follow. This ten-day rule of reporting it, which is a big one that you just have been talking about. And you don't have the opportunity to get in and do the kind of like restorative justice work that works with children. These are children making mistakes. Sometimes the mistakes are bullying, sometimes the mistakes are insulting.
Taunting, teasing, intimidating.
Yeah, but sometimes it's a distinguishing characteristic, sometimes it doesn't. It matters, but it's not, but this law has no, it doesn't give you any room to work with the students. And I'm telling you, in my own family, we have avoided coming to resolution in protecting a child, my own child, because I don't want the nonsense of having a parent receive a letter and this hysteria that comes along with HIV. And I, I'm, there are parents in town who are talking to legislators to try to figure out how to say, this is a well-intended law. And they're having high-level conversations in Trenton. A well-intended law because kids were killing themselves and this is serious. You can't have kids being bullied. We're still having kids being bullied and this law isn't helping. It's not helping the kids not be bullied. But because if they don't have a distinguishing characteristic, and kids are afraid to come forward because they know the kind of ballooning that can happen. It can get, the actual problem can get so big because instead of just sitting two kids in a room, like, you can envision it with a second grader, right? Because they're innocent, they don't know the difference, and they're just picking up on something they heard or saw. And you can sit down with two kids and try to figure it out. Talk to a high school kid. Tell them, yeah, you got, you, somebody said something to you that is, would fall under an HIV. Now, all of a sudden, parents are getting letters. There's no room to sit down and work through it. It has to be a formal and a giant issue. And it, it, I don't think it helps. What I, what I think it does do, which I think is good, is takes a temperature of your building and of your district, so you can compare it. Are we solving the problem? Are we containing bullying? Or are we, either, some school districts, I'm sure, as we did in the past, didn't do it. We're just like, we're not doing it because it doesn't make sense. Because every single attorney, administrator I've talked to, not to put people on the street, it's an awful thing. And this isn't you, Sandy. I'm not asking you to respond. I just, I think we can do better as a system than this law. And, and, you know, I feel like, I obviously feel very bashful.
We've been working with that, that family to get a family input based on our experiences on how to improve the law.
No, no, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, I know, I know.
But in the meantime, there is that window where you can, you can do what you say, okay? But, because we always present this as an option to parents. And it's the parents primarily who say, go ahead, yes, I want to file.
Let me tell you, there are a lot of parents who are saying, no, I'm not filing, I'm not filing some formal letter because I don't want some investigation. It's not, it's not okay. Because what it does is, you can't, you can't officially engage in a problem.
But the principals do, the principals do. They don't sweep anything under the carpet, they don't ignore things. If a parent expresses that they don't want to proceed with an HIV investigation, even if it's just for those reasons, they don't want letters going out, they don't want their child stigmatized or anything like that. If they say that to a principal, the principal will investigate and will handle the matter internally without going to the process. We don't say you must.
Oh, Sandy, so if there is a racial slur, we have, we have to act on that. We don't have the option saying, we're going to do the HIV law, because then we're not following the law.
Well, I don't think Adam is talking about.
If it's, if it's identifying factor, it can be a cleft lip. We have to, we have, we, we have to act on that. The law says, this is an identifying characteristic, this fits HIV. We can't say, we won't do this, we'll just do a person.
We don't say that.
Right, we can't say.
But if a, but if a parent of that child does not want to proceed with an HIV, we don't force them.
So we don't address it because we pretend it didn't happen?
No, we don't pretend it didn't happen. We certainly do address it. But we address it in the school, with the principal, with the counselor, with the parents, you know.
Well, then our statistics for HIV are not accurate. Because we have cases, we know are HIV, and we're not following the process.
Yeah, but we don't know that they're HIV until we investigate.
If it's a cleft lip and they're making fun of the cleft lip, that's HIV. If the parent says they're on HIV, then we're not listening.
When there's distinguishing characteristics, we generally do. Yeah, we generally do. But I was just trying to clarify that.
Adam's point, and Adam's point is, if my kid has a cleft lip, I'm not wanting him to cleft lip. Whatever, it's big ears, I don't know what it is. Parents are not telling principals because we don't really have the option of deciding whether or not we apply this process. And if we are, as a district, and I don't believe we are, you're saying we usually do, I think we always do, applying the process, if we're not applying the process, we're not doing this right.
We probably wouldn't even find out about that case.
This is, that's the point, that's the point Adam made. We don't find out about it because my neighbor's going to get a letter home, formal letter from me, saying your child is the accused of being a bully. And I think part of the problem with law, not only is it a law that's good intentioned, but convoluted, even the labeling of bully is the biggest issue. If it was name caller, we wouldn't have, people would say, okay, I'll go through this process. But I think Adam's point, which is accurate, is because of that letter. Because if your kid gets in a fight and is not an HIV, does something that's not an HIV, just student conflict, there's no formal letter home from the superintendent of schools. That's Adam's point, I think.
It is, and what I'm saying is, is that then you do not get a good. Actually, I think the HIV causes the climate in the building to be worse than it could be. I think it actually does the antithetical.
Well, it's amazing, you mentioned restorative justice, which I love because, you know, you're talking about the climate, but the second part is really having the conversations that aren't necessarily rushed so that the perpetrator recognizes the impact of their actions. And I, I think honestly we do, in general, a relatively good job handling this. I see Adam's concern, but my point is that I think restorative justice is something that would be fantastic in those cases that we can't always do. And, and once you do the HIV, people sometimes lawyer up and then you can't do it anyway.
But those actions of restorative justice are still happening, all right? So, so when, when someone gets an HIV or is found not to be an HIV and just a code of contact, code of conduct, we are talking to those kids. We are, so the HIV process doesn't exclude actions taken by the school district to help improve things. You can still have counselors talk to people, you can still do these things. It's just that the HIV process keeps people from being involved, wanting to be involved in the process because they can't see, the code of conduct and HIV coexist on a level, right? The HIV is about data to the state of New Jersey to say, we're trying to do something about it. Code of conduct is what, is how we run our schools with our students and our faculty and staff. They're not mutually exclusive. The problem is that HIV covers the code of conduct and keeps the formality of it and the largeness of it sometimes keep parents from getting involved. The code of conduct is blocked because parents don't want to get involved in that particular thing. That makes, that makes something I'm saying, like, are I phrasing that correctly?
They still feel comfortable coming forward because then there is that wall of backlash.
You don't hit the code of conduct first, you hit the HIV first. And we have exceptionally trained teachers and administrators who could get, who have worked with students for years that could get involved with these things. But I mean, you have to, you have to come up with a number in your own head. Out of ten things that happened to your child, your children, our children, how many are they, first of all, your child is not even inclined to come home and tell you, right? They're inclined to just eat it, right? Someone called me this and I just don't want it, I, you know, you're talking about a very small population of people saying, you know, this is wrong, Ben, and I'm going to, I'm going to say something to my parents, let alone the actual school. I mean, you find out secondhand, you find out a month later that your kid was being picked on and you say, why didn't you tell us? I didn't want to make a big deal, I wanted it to go away. That's like, everybody's had that conversation. So these statistics are, no offense, it's just garbage. And, and, and I think that the HIV law makes it harder on our students and our system to do what's right for our kids. And I applaud the parents who are trying to get into, to, trying to fix it. And I, I'm interested in how we can put into practice things that help our kids not turn, you know, a small thing into a massive thing.
It's a bright line rule. I mean, if you said to me, I want to change the bright line rule, such that the first instance maybe doesn't have to go through this formal process and even it's the second where you can more express. I think overall, our district does a great job. It doesn't mean that all districts do.
That's right.
Right, and so if you don't have that bright line rule, you know, it could go too far in the other direction. So arguing about the bright line rule, I kind of feel like this is the area where you probably need one. Just give them the risk, but maybe there are some changes because I do agree that it kind of involves us in some ways.
Yeah. All right, sorry, I didn't mean to.
And I could just add one other thing, because this is such an interesting topic, but I, I think it's difficult sometimes. I, I don't know the specific incident that you're talking about, so I, I'm certainly not even commenting on that. But like, when you say that you find out about something a month later, there are some parents that, you know, as soon as any negative thing happens to their kid, they're immediately like, oh my gosh, that's so, like, they take it harder than the kids. And in building resiliency, for me personally, you know, unless my kid is coming home crying about it, unless my kid is saying, I don't want to go to school, I don't approach the administration about it. That, to me, is when it's, is when it's bullying. And I remember when my, when one of my children was in elementary school, he got in trouble for bullying because he damaged another kid's lunchbox. And I talked to the principal, I'm like, you got to be kidding me, my son is on his fourth lunchbox because the other ones have been previously damaged throughout the whole school year and I never said anything. And now my son is, because they would throw the lunchboxes around. So I guess my point is that, you know, if it does a perceived characteristic, we have to do it. And for the parents, I think it's just really, I, I do think it's sometimes healthy if your child is not crushed by it to just learn to, I think, to do better in the world with a slightly thicker skin. I'm just saying it depends on the situation. I didn't know if you were saying all the time or not, Adam, but I want to give a little perspective.
There's, yes, I, I do think there's a, like, I don't know. Everybody's going to, you know, don't tell, don't tell people how to spend their money and raise their children, right? I mean, I'm not telling a parent what to do or what not to do. I'm just saying that this rule makes it, there is a hesitancy for the student and the parent when it comes up. And I, and, and so that's just why when we talk about this sort of, running the law.
Well, at least it provides a perspective to the parent when they hear that negative things are happening to their child and it could definitely be HIV. And if it's not examined in that light, I mean, that's why we hear about suicides.
Yeah. No, I mean, listen, this whole thing, we're, if you ask any administrator or teacher in this building, what they, what is the worst thing that can happen? I am sure a student suicide is right at the top of that list. So I don't think anybody's looking away from this thing happening. But this, I mean, the terms they're used in the law, the target, the this, it's, 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 it's just, something's not adding up. But we can beat it to death. I don't need to keep this, but, all right?
It's a, it's a good discussion, but I do want to just end it on a good note. Overall, I want to say, you know, one case of confirmed HIV too much. But the numbers overall perhaps don't seem low. And so to me, I heard overall a good story, all the things that we're doing. I don't know what the grade is and I don't know whether we can trust the numbers or not. Overall, it sounds to me that we're good. So to me, I mean, I know there are, you know, not many people watching, but it's, you know, good job, Haddonfield, keep up the good work, keep reinforcing with your kids. It's important, it matters, whether we like the HIV rule or we don't. I mean, we can go and, you know, we can go and advocate for changes, but, you know, it's important, it's worth it. Keep up the good job, Haddonfield.
I mean, I think that we would still have, maybe perhaps, a lesser number than reality. So if we had high numbers, then we could assume that we had even more than that. So if we had very, very low numbers and, you know, we had more than what we're showing, that's not going to be as high as, you know, things were out of control. You know, I think that, like I said, I think that teachers and the principals are doing an excellent job in maintaining good school climates and teaching students the proper way to treat each other. Yeah.
Thank you, Sandy. We are moving to committee, meeting reports. Jamie, you go first.
Okay, a lot of what we talked about was the math curriculum committee, which was fabulous presentation. I loved having everyone present a little bit. So I'm not going to belabor that point, but that was a great snapshot. Believe it or not, it was a snapshot because so much goes into these curriculum committees. So we're wrapping up the social studies curriculum committee. They'll be writing the curriculum. up the social studies curriculum committee, they'll be writing the curriculum starting this summer, and then the math curriculum, the math committee is continuing to, to move forward. Um, we're taught, one thing we've been talking about is the librarian is going to serve as the specialist team leader for the specialists, so you have one person that's kind of, that's going to be the team leader for the other specialists, and also is going to be helping with cross curricular connections. We talked about, um, interdisciplinary connections between different subjects, there's some of the obvious ones, math and science, social studies and, and English, but really trying to get beyond that. We discussed the learning acceleration program, which is the summer program, that we were not going to have any minimum amount of students in a class, aside from just one, but we are encouraging people to enroll your children, so if you're interested, there are still open spots. Alphabet is going to be helping with the elementary school, and we have a lot of great teachers at all levels that have, that will be teaching this summer. And I think that's, really, we talked about getting more students, there's a drop off of women going from their junior year to senior year, math starts to drop off, and we talked about trying to figure out, possibly doing a focus group to, to figure out what the cause of that is, to encourage women to continue with the higher level maths throughout high school.
Any questions? Thank you. Justin, Florence facility?
We haven't met since the last meeting, we didn't, it's, hmm, one sec.
Okay. Lynn?
Um, yeah, we met last Thursday, and we discussed the mandated safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of service plan, which is, there's a resolution to approve that plan on the agenda. Because we received SRA funds for the elementary and secondary school, and we're going to leave funds under the American Rescue Plan Act, we were required to devise this return to school plan, even though we've already returned to school. So it will be reviewed periodically, and we are mandated to review it at least every six months, and adjust it as we receive from New Jersey Department of Health guidance, which we know that changes all the time. We also reviewed the policies on the agenda for first reading, and really, all of those just kind of cleaned up some language. There are two assessment of pay policies, one for support staff and one for teaching staff, and it just grants the board secretary the ability to assess penalties if a staff or teaching, or support staff or teaching staff member fails to render their services. And also the alcoholic beverages on school premises, we adjusted that a little bit, because as it was written, it specifies student treatment under policy, but the, the policy actually applies to students, teachers, support staff, and all visitors that come to school. We reviewed the policy to abolish, it's on the agenda, the Federal Families First for the Virus Response Act, it expired in December, so we are just going to abolish that. And then we looked at four existing policies, only one of which we pulled for further discussion, and that's policy 1230 on superintendent's duties, and we just want to make sure that all the language in that policy is aligned with our strategic goals.
Is there, any questions?
No questions about policy, but I guess I'll wait until.
Reaction?
Yep.
Um, you do it, communications, we haven't met.
We haven't met.
Yeah, okay. Uh, contracts on the agenda, it was sent out today, um, I already talked about it, and there's not any more people watching tonight than, the last time we talked about it, but Rachel is here, so thanks, Rachel. And thank you, Chuck, and, and Gino, and everybody else, it was, it's a good result.
Thank you for providing a blue line version of it, so we can actually see the changes.
That was for me, you just spent it because I knew.
Yeah, right, well, the time.
He did it on purpose, right?
That's the way I keep up with it. If you only saw Linda's color-coded charts, then you'd really be. Yeah, that was great. I was actually just looking through email tonight, and that was the first thing that popped up. They were very color-coded.
Eight by ten colored glossies with arrows and circles?
And by the way, we settled shortly after Linda.
It was the color-coded, let's, let's all agree to that.
PTA updates, anybody attend, anything new happening?
I did. I went to the Lizzie PTA meeting on Tuesday, and they did, just in events wrap-up, and despite a really challenging year, they came up with some creative fundraisers, there were a bunch of diamond donates that nailed it to cupcake and cake decorating, which I guess was a huge success, book fair in Inwood, and they pulled off some really wonderful events, a really successful teacher appreciation week, the garden is back up and running with help from parents and student council and Boy Scouts, and they were very excited, field trips have all resumed, all of the classes, first through fifth, have either had a field trip, fourth grade goes tomorrow to Borough Hall, so hopefully the weather will be done. And there have been lots of exciting celebrations for fifth graders, I won't list them all, but there was a great promotion ceremony last night, Adam and I were there celebrating our fifth graders, so it was real sweet. And then they approved the PTA board for next year, added some new positions, including a couple at-large members, and we have a couple openings still, and then they're looking ahead to events for next year, they're revamping some, they're adding some new ones, and the real focus will be on community building, not on raising money, and it's so important after this crazy year and a half, to bring everybody together and into a part of the community. So they're in good hands.
And then I met with the middle school, not much went on, but they, they did talk about the upcoming events, tonight's school party, and next week they have a Funplex trip, there's one for sixth and seventh grade, and then one for the, no, sixth grade, and then seventh and eighth. But as you said, it's just great that they're having these, these normal activities at the end of the year, it's, it's good for the, the kids to, to be leaving school feeling some sense of normalcy.
Alright, thank you. Do you know, do you have a report tonight?
No, just a couple quick announcements, that, that we are in the process of sending home the individual SEL reports that were, that were generated for the students of grades three through twelve, completed the individual portions of those surveys, and again, it's pretty cool, because the students who were here two years ago, they'll see their data over two points in time, so we're excited about that. We're trying to find a way to do that electronically, to put it into our student information system, to avoid having to do a large mailing, so we're making progress on that. Tatum's new principal, Kim Durrell, visited Tatum today, she got to visit all the classrooms, meet with teachers, and spend the day with these clients, that was really good. Chuck and I had lunch with her today, so she's really excited to begin her tenure here in Hattie Field, and that's it.
Thanks, Gino. Chuck? So, I don't know, superintendent's birthday, um, July meeting, so I, I fully expect that by July, we will not be in this lineup like this, we'll be back to more normal board meeting, if things keep going the way they're gonna be going, we'll have an audience here. And that, I mean, one of the things we should be thinking about, and definitely decide in the July meeting, is things like calling for public comments, right? So, you know, I've been talking to other superintendents, what, what different districts are doing, because some are saying, well, we like the calls, and other people are saying, well, you know what, you want to say something, come to the meeting, right? I mean, there's different philosophies, and I, you know, we should certainly address that, because I would advise by Augustus' attempt, we'll definitely be back to where we will be all in the room, we'll have plenty of chairs for everyone, there are lifting guidelines all the time, so that, that, so July will not look like this, we'll still be broadcasting, I think that, I think as a whole, we'd agree, I can say with confidence, we still want to do the live broadcast, and the board meeting is an important thing, plus it's been taped, it's easier to get up online, all those, all those good things, but there are a few things we'll have to talk about and work out. The class of 2021, when you get your Hattie Field Living, you're gonna see them featured in it, which is a very nice feature, they did a great job with it, a lot of good articles, really good stuff by them, just some postgraduate plans, you can see what, where they're going, what they're doing, right, the general plans, the ninety, ninety-four percent roughly in the four-year college, another three percent in the two-and-a-half percent, two-year colleges, career education, I, that's an area where I, I don't remember last time we had a career education around the school, now I'm not sure I studied that closely, but I think that trade school thing is something that's, it's becoming more, regaining some growth, I, my, my middle boy's in trade school right now, he's in the airplane maintenance repair itself, so, so that's, that's pretty exciting, I think it's a great thing, opportunity, you got some kids that are gap years, and this is already posted on the website, but this is our, our list of what schools our kids are going to, and, and the number of kids that we have going there, and you see we have one double-digit, Rowan is our, our most popular issue with ten students attending, but this full list is on the website already, so if you're interested, you can go and see where our students are attending schools.
The three other, is that military?
Um, we don't know their plans, others, other is, they haven't told us what they're doing, all this information is voluntary.
Oh, sure.
I don't believe we have anyone going directly to the military, we have a military academy at West Point.
Sure.
I don't believe any of the refugees in the military. Upcoming presentations, we have a social studies committee coming up, and our board retreat is being July fifteenth, and then the fall, we're gonna come back, with state of extracurricular, state of service community, all those type of things, to try to get really more information about what's happening in schools. And that's just it for today. Any questions? Okay.
I'm sorry, I do have a question. So the, the retreat is coming up, and do we have, I know that we have the, the book that we're, we're reading, but do we have an agenda?
We'll get that to you, we're still, we're still hammering that out, so we'll have that all we got, we have, we're gonna try to get all three, definitely get all three district strategic plan goals in there, talk about future stuff, you know, probably what we're gonna do, we can talk about grading and those things, a lot of stuff has been hovering around us, we're just like, get the portrait of the learner presented, that's, that's completely, that's been completed, I finalized right now, so that'll, they'll be the things we're looking at, so we'll have an agenda out, plenty of time ahead of time, as you know, as you expect.
And so, I mean, this entire year, we know, has been a crazy year, and, and there were so many things that last year, we were looking toward the future, and, you know, you just rattled off a lot of things right there, really important things. Is there enough time in, in the retreat, is there any thought to, you know, revamping the retreat, and, and, you know?
There hasn't been, but we're, yeah, it's always, it's a terrible retreat, it's two extra hours.
It's confusing, yeah.
Is it worse, is it worse than the lottery?
My first one, I thought it was a tingle. Yeah, it's like, oh, it's just.
One of the problems, and I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I thought we were doing like the catch me thing.
No one comes to the retreat, but the retreat has to be an open board meeting, we have to advertise it, so theoretically, you want to like, you do want to get out of our usual environment, the code or the retreat for a purpose, and to change the way it looks, and have a different look for it. I would, I'm totally up for that, it's, and, and if we want to postpone, I wouldn't mind doing something small in, in July, and adding something in the fall, that, that maybe was more, and I've always wanted this, less, less of what we've always done, and, and more creative.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a meeting, you know, it really, the visionary and strategic and, you know, bouncing ideas.
A lot of who we are as a board, I mean, that can come together, we've been through, you know, I'm getting along with you, but we, we have this sort of change in, in the, the administration, change in philosophy, and now that's settled, it was supposed to settle right into a new, a new future, and it settled right into COVID, so, you know, this sort of, we have, we have portrait of a learner, we have district goals, there might be times to sort of, I always thought, what does this board stand for, who do we want to be, having a leaning forward, I think that would be great, right in time for the election, it's the risk of runoff, so. I mean, it's hard, because it does rip it, but yeah, no, I'd be up for it, we can talk about it more. July, I think, is pressing, because I still think it's kind of scripted, coming out of it. I mean, that's probably a really good idea, if we can do what we've been doing, but there's no reason why we can't add something else, and we, we probably have to add, most of your children, choice this, another board meeting before July first, because my evaluation hasn't gone, and it wouldn't matter if we were CUSAC, you know, it's what happened this year.
Well, that was our topic.
Yeah, we, well, we'll, we'll figure it out, but if you, have you, I mean, I don't want any questions for Chuck. Good question, just talk about it, anything else for Chuck before we have?
Real quick question, you had mentioned that the portrait of the learner wasn't being finalized, I thought, the way I understood the process, that it was gonna be presented for public feedback, did they already gather public feedback?
She's, she's actually, well, there are, there are people in the committee, and then Judy's meeting with the principals and stuff like that, and working out the final, some of the final details.
The only question I have, when is, when do we do, what are your, I know we have to meet as a board for evaluations, but practically, I wasn't paying attention, I saw the email that said you completed yourself about, when is, when is our individual feedback due, or are we the only one that has done it?
As soon as possible. I know, I did knock online and see who has, I mean, I thought somebody had trouble, has anyone done it? Okay, we have had a few, yeah, no, we just gave it.
I think we have to do this.
Trying to get it done, so that what we do is we compile a, you know, I, David and I compile like a summary based on the feedback, and then we're, we're supposed to meet with Chuck and give it to them, formally, as, as a board's under, in, 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 in exact, it's not in public, but we're supposed to, so we could try to even, while we're still allowed, do it electronically, if it's, if we come down to the wire, and we do want to get it done on the June thirtieth, to, to, you know, to follow our guidelines. So get that done, and then we'll be able to, from there, I'll be able to summarize, and then we'll, we'll get, you know, get a plan for finishing. Any other questions on that? Graduation is a week from tonight, so that's a big deal, and we're all invited again this year, it's, it, knock, knock on wood, seven days out, the weather looks promising, to be non-stressful, and that's also, it's an awesome evening, so that's the product coming off the line. It's great, it is, it's, it's really, it's, you know, it's great, but, so that's, that just be, be ready for that, you should have all sent the email, okay? Uh, let's, any?
Actually, we were supposed to get a parking pass tonight.
Ooh, good, yeah, you want to?
Doesn't look good. Those make it really hard to have that parking pass.
I think tracing might happen, the time is.
They're in my office, Chuck.
All right.
Rachel's right. They are valuable, they're gold.
I'm sorry, I forgot. They're on my desk, if somebody can run down for you.
Rachel just left.
Give you one job.
I know, I can run back.
We're all set. Um, good. Okay, then we'll open it up to public comments. John, can you put the slide up? Just to remind, hopefully, this is, the slide on the YouTube broadcast will give instructions to call in to one of the nine people who wants to make a comment, and give us, give us a ring on that number.
Turn it out.
Turn it out, and then I'll, I'll call on your telephone number, star six to mute or unmute, and then we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes, to let other people comment, and you can always re, requeue yourself in line. Give it a minute to have that posted, and you.
Yeah, just one. And just drop the seven, so it's fair to people.
I'm on the second, I'm in place.
I know.
Yeah, I'm on.
That's word.
That's more.
Okay.
That's five.
Six. So it does.
So, well, John, we're gonna leave it on for another ten second before we move past it, because... Okay, so we're gonna, if someone pops in, I'll go back to it. But we're gonna move along for approvals. Number ten, governance. We're accepting the monthly suspension HIV vandalism and violence reports as submitted by the assistant superintendent. Our fire and security bill reports. We are first reading of three policies. We're abolishing policy sixteen forty-nine, the federal first, the federal families' first coronavirus response act. We are approving the safer turn to in-person instruction plan, and we are approving job descriptions for the strength and conditioning, a job description for the strength and conditioning judge. Can I get a motion?
Motion, second.
Linda, Heather, any discussion?
Yes, I have a question about policy three-one, five-one, and, and four-one, five-one. So, just curious about the change in language from shall to may. And I'm certain you guys must have talked about this, so.
So, the, the original, there are two issues. First issue is the, the way you can see that the policy currently reads, there's a semicolon, there's no information. So, first of all, that was a typo that was oversight that was never corrected. But we eliminated that part, and the second part being that there is a level of discretion that we have when, when we choose to assess penalties for any issue that we believe will result in withholding a pay or increment for others.
So, that's the way that I write it, to, to give discretion. And my only comment or concern is that, you know, could it be viewed as arbitrary? Could we, if it is discretionary, are we setting ourselves up for potentially not applying this equally across the board?
I think one of the concerns was it's actually not equal. Because if you lose an increment at one part in the scale, right? That compounds and becomes quite a dramatic change later, which might not be equivalent to the intended penalty of losing the increment. Am I saying that right?
That is...
That's not an explanation.
Very accurate.
Okay, so that's...
And I, I, I figured that that, that was the purpose of it, but I just wanted to at least voice the concern.
It's a great point, and, and in our discussion review of this, there are very few instances where it is, it is so mechanistic in that if this happens, then we have to do this without considering any variables. And if, there are mechanisms that can be implemented if it's believed that we're not implementing this fairly. And the bargaining unit certainly has a lot of rights through the contract to redress issues like that. So, I think it's a good point, but we still believe having a, a level of discretion is important. So, in any circumstance, we are considering the variables we need to each case.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, thank you.
I was just gonna make a comment on the monthly HIV vandalism and violence report in light of Adam's passionate statements. And that kind of goes to what Linda's talking about too, versus shall to may. I was heartened to see the resolution of a particular one where it was a mishear over here with an immediate consequence, an apology, and, and a clearance. And it's a shame that you still have to go through the entire process when it was, it was addressed, confirmed, adjudicated right on the spot. It's kind of like saying, oh, you know, you misspeaked, and then all hell breaks loose in, in a policy. Then I'd love to see that kind of go the way that we're making the change to the pay increment ones. Because sometimes common sense should prevail. And, and unfortunately, we have, well, fortunately, we have control over our own policies. We have control over a law that doesn't allow us to apply common sense.
You're here. All right. But it didn't take twenty minutes to set that. No, listen, I'm fine.
No, it's just supportive evidence of my passion for it. Any other? Mike?
Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Ms. Paoli.
Yes.
Ms. Hoagardle.
Yes.
Mr. Bedford.
Yes.
Vice President Seidel.
Yes.
Mr. Vecchio.
Yes.
Ms. Crook.
Yes.
Ms. Coitner.
Yes.
President Sangello.
Yes. Eleven curriculum specialized, a few approval field trips, conferences, travel, and overnight trips. We are approving an agreement with the McKinney Vendo Homeless Education Project. Kids in Mo, we are agreeing with Kids in Motion to provide physical therapies, services. We're approving the evaluation rates for the Burlington County Special Services. Hadfield Theater Arts is gonna provide performance to third-grade students at Central on the Blacktop. We're approving a contract with IXL Learning for the math, for a math and ELA program during the next school year. We are approving Alphabet to help with summer learning acceleration program. We're, the NJSI AA membership resolution, we are approving our membership in that organization. Approving the curriculum writing for next year initiatives to include articulation, SEO work, NJSLS updates, and integrations, and a new course curriculum. Resolving to approve summer hours for the school nurses to do athletic, student athletics, sports, physicals. We are approving. We are approving field trips, the attachment to support community-based instruction trips and activities for secondary-level programs. Can I get a motion?
Motion, second.
Okay, Lynn beat Tom. It's gonna be Jamie and Lynn for the record. Comments? Mike? Oh, yeah, we gotta add. No, that's not yet.
No, it is, it is now.
I thought it was the...
We, we probably put these items under personal specialized.
Okay.
So, this is where we would add item eleven L, which would state approved settlement agreement for student number two-four-three-three-nine-three-six-eight-four-three.
Say it again, two-four-three-three-nine?
Two-four-three-three-nine. Three-six-eight-four-three.
Okay. So, a motion to add eleven L, the approval of a settlement agreement for student two-four-three-three-nine-three-six-eight-four-three.
All good.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Oh, Mike, I think you called that. All in favor, all against? Go ahead, Mike.
All against.
There you go. I need to take your job.
I'll just call you.
Okay. Now, we're back in discussion for eleven A through L now. Any questions or comments?
Only comment I have is on J, and I read it the way you said it at first, but it doesn't say it as nurses. But it's eighty hours. Is that spread over the nurses? Or is that a single nurse working eighty hours over the summer?
That's multiple nurses.
It's multiple nurses, okay. No, thank you.
All right. Hearing no more. Mike?
Ms. Paoli.
Yes.
Ms. Hoagardle.
Yes.
Mr. Bedford.
Yes.
Vice President Seidel.
Yes.
Mr. Vecchio.
Yes.
Ms. Crook.
Yes.
Ms. Coitner.
Yes.
Ms. Ho.
Yes.
President Sangello.
Yes. Okay, number twelve, personnel. We are approving the attachments, which includes new personnel, transfer salary upgrades, mentoring, extracurricular coaching, appointments, leases, absences, and resignations. We are approving the superintendent to award employment contracts over the summer. We're resolving to approve Dr. Nappi to teach reading during the E S Y, and Dr. Levis, or I'm sorry, Janet Levison, to teach reading who are also doing the E S Y. We're approving seven bus drivers to provide bussing for the E S Y program. We are approving the stipend for twelve math curriculum, math committee members. We're approving three EAs for the E S Y program for hours of eight fifteen to eleven fifteen. We're approving nineteen teachers for the summer two thousand and one learning acceleration program, not to exceed sixty-eight four thousand, sixty-eight thousand four hundred from the E S S U R two forms. Can I get a motion?
Motion, second.
Linda and Jamie, any discussion?
I have one question, and it's a weird one, but we're all asking a second. Are all the bus drivers that are listed here current bus drivers for the district?
Yes.
Thank you. Then I want to ask a second.
We, we actually have to make a correction. So, this is for the first attachment, the personnel attachment, so it's twelve A.
Yep.
And this is letter A on the attachment under employment. So, fourth, fourth employee down, England Roche Lloyd.
Yep.
It should be master's step one, not master's sixty. So, that salary should be fifty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty.
All right. Motion to adjust England Roche Lloyd's step end amount from M A sixty to just M A step one in dollar amount of fifty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty.
Motion.
Second. Jamie and Tom, Mike, you want to do just the all?
All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
All right. We're back to approving number twelve with adjustments for twelve A A four. Any other discussion? Mike calling?
Ms. Hoagardle.
Yes.
Mr. Bedford. Vice President Seidel.
Yes.
Mr. Vecchio.
Yes.
Ms. Crook.
Yes.
Ms. Coitner.
Yes.
Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Ms. Paoli.
Yes.
President Sangello.
Yes. Okay, thirteen, improving business and finance recommendations. We're approving tuition reimbursement for the EC Toronto. We're approving Kate Barnes-Sketch to be our solicitor. We're approving Willens, Golden, and Spicer, your bond counsel. We're approving Verso and Stewart to be our auditor. We're approving a Camden County Educational Services Commission as a provider of services. We're approving participation in the Camden County Cooperative Pricing System. We're approving the Omni Financial Group to provide four O three B administration administrator services. We're approving NW Fin, NW Financial Group to be the district financial advisor. We're going to participate in the Somerset County Cooperative Pricing System as well. We're approving to report awarded contracts. We are approving to authorize the superintendent and school business administrator to pay bills during the summer of two thousand and twenty-one. We're authorizing the school business administrator to close out the petty account, cash account. We're approving Michael Catalano, our VA, to be the temporary qualified purchasing agent for the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two school year, year. We're approving two transfers from the current, of the current year anticipated surplus to reserves, a million to capital reserves, a million to maintenance reserves. We're accepting the donation of a baritone saxophone in honor of Carl Price, and donated by Vincent Hurley. Thank you. We're accepting the donation of a park bench and plaque from the Tatum PTA. Thank you, Tatum PTA. We're approving the collective negotiations agreement between the Hadfield Board of Education and the Hadfield Education Association. And we are approving the payment of bills, budget transfers, the board secretary's report, the cash, and the cash summary report. Can I get a motion?
Motion, second.
Tom and Jamie, can we hear some discussion of questions?
Thirteen Q, the negotiations agreement?
Yes.
There is an error on the coaches' scale. Basketball's twice, and there's no baseball.
Okay.
So, I don't know who, they're at different, they're, it's basketball and then basketball underneath, but there is no baseball. So, I'm assuming one of those is supposed to be baseball.
Okay.
But I don't...
Baseball's the same group, yeah.
Baseball's with soccer and then, so we can...
Okay, so it must be the central one. Yeah, that's what I figured it was just.
Thanks. Do you have any adjustment?
I don't think so, 'cause that turns out, you know, one team, nothing.
What's that? We're not actually approving, we're not approving, we're, we're, you're authorizing us to sign the contract.
Right, but we, that language isn't, like, that language can be changed now because we agreed to give now...
Oh, yeah, I'm not worried about that part. I'm just worried about our formality.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think it's easy. Okay. Any other comments?
You can catch that.
I heard you were catching my, my copy editing skills.
We put them in there.
Yeah, that was...
You passed.
I'll send you a...
All right, not hearing any. Michael?
Mr. Bedford.
Yes.
Vice President Seidel.
Yes.
Mr. Vecchio.
Yes.
Ms. Crook.
Yes.
Ms. Coitner.
Yes.
Ms. Ho.
Yes.
Ms. Paoli.
Yes.
Ms. Hoagardle.
Yes.
President Sangello.
Yes. Number fourteen, we're approving the minutes for the regular meeting and executive session on May twentieth, and the regular meeting and executive session on May twenty-seventh. Motion?
Motion, second.
Yeah, Jamie got it.
I'm just saying.
He's tired.
We're really, we're really running this like a game show. Any comments?
The, the only thing I wanted to bring up is I think we used to note attendance in executive session, and that might be helpful going forward sometimes when I pull those items for different legal reasons. I'm good to approve it, but I'm not all going to...
Something the board can understand for the future. If you're not present for a meeting and you read the minutes, you can still approve. You don't, you're not required to abstain or not vote on minutes, executive minutes, if you weren't there. You can do whatever you want, but just, just know that if you read the minutes, you can approve. It, it, that's, that's, I'm assuming that means why?
No, 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 I'm saying, but I mean, if you're saying you don't need them, you don't need them. I feel like we've had meeting minutes pulled in the past for legal reasons, and I thought it was helpful to have noted who was there because sometimes people come in later for the regular meeting, but they're not there for exec. They come in late, and it's just helpful for legal reasons to note who was there because they might, may or may not be called as a witness.
Yeah, the time should be on both. Thanks, man. Thanks, Andy.
Not a big deal, but just thought I'd mention it.
Going forward.
It's like it's true.
Some of that's a timing thing for us, though, right? Because we do, we, we take roll after, right? Like, and, and normally, we would do, we'd open the meeting at seven, take roll, and have an executive session, and then everybody who might call a roll for... We really should, we should...
We should call rolls twice.
I think we used to.
We used to. I, I think we stopped. I don't know why we stopped doing it, but we used to call rolls twice.
Yeah.
Going in, before going into, and you didn't, I, I think we were less formal with it because you could just see who was there.
Right.